Okay, I'm Midora Champagne. I'm the Chair of the Norfolk Public School Committee.
This is Sarah Ward, School Committee Member.
Victoria Saldana, Director of Curriculum for the Norfolk Public Schools.
I am Barry Nechtow, the School Business Consultant.
I'm Matt Hafner, I'm the Facilities Director for the Town of Schools.
Fantastic.
Do you want to introduce your team now, or do you do that in your presentation?
If you don't mind, we'll introduce right at the beginning, but in the presentation, if that's okay.
Sure. So just in terms of the structure for tonight, I think Adrian let you know you have about 15 to 20 minutes for your presentation. We have about six follow-up questions for you afterwards, about five minutes a question, and then we'll have time at the end for you to ask any questions you have for us. Sound good?
Fantastic.
All right, great, we'll turn it over.
Excuse me, before you start, would you guys like some waters?
Oh, I'll grab them. Oh, thank you.
No, she wants it open.
Are there any tricks to these microphones?
No, we sorted that out in the last interview, you're good.
That's always, that's always good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you very much. So.
Right ahead.
So, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk with you tonight about the urgent spatial needs you need at each holiday in the Freeman Kennedy School, and our specific plan to get you from today to town meeting, spring town meeting vote in May. And so, my name is Troy Randall, Partner, AI3 Architects. I will be the point person for the project. And our processes and our firm philosophy is a little bit different. Our partners, we have an integral hands-on role in the entire day-to-day project operation. And so, that is, has been extremely successful over the last 23 years. Justin Tebow, who just an hour ago, just a little caveat, an hour ago got a call from his wife with an emergency. So, he was going to be here, he is not obviously here, but he will be also integrally part of the process. Midora and Matt had the opportunity to meet him on-site when we toured, toured the building, so he will be part of the project. Also here is Wayne Matson, at the end, President of Griffith and Berry, representing the MEP and Fire Protection Teams. Talk a little bit about the integration of an addition into existing systems, the evaluation of existing systems within a building, as well as the anticipated upgrades to the stretch code that's scheduled to come out the middle of next year. Also with us is Chris Bradner and Ashley Cullion, both Principals at Traverse Landscape Architects, and they'll talk about the site, the opportunities, the utilities, the traffic related to the existing Freeman Kennedy site. If we're fortunate enough to be selected, we have a, an incredible team behind us, and over 75 professionals, architects, specialists, engineers, all of the disciplines necessary to proceed with a full project, a successful project. We design schools, 100%, that is our, in the last 23 years, that's what we do, design, research, analyze schools, public, private, and charter schools K through 12. We have had the opportunity to work with over 35 districts across the, across New England, as well as develop over 90 projects, ranging from early education all the way through to major high schools in Massachusetts and Rhode Island. We know that, at least at this point, you're not proceeding with the MSBA's participation. However, we've had almost two decades of working with the MSBA and the former SBA, working with projects ranging from smaller elementary schools to 500,000 square foot complex CTE high schools. So, we know, we know the MSBA and their process very well, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. We also know the importance of designing sustainably, from our first, our first green school, or the first green school in Massachusetts 20 years ago, Whitman Hansen Regional High School with the MTC, Massachusetts Technology Collaborative, to present-day expertise in zero net energy design, being expert panelists on the MSBA's demystifying net zero program that is, was intended to educate the districts on truly net zero is possible. So, we're panelists and experts on that process. The majority of our projects start with feasibility studies, start with existing conditions evaluations. You can see a series of projects here that all success tied to the initial evaluation and planning process. I'm going to highlight three of them, Abington Public Schools, Watertown Public Schools, and Norwood Public Schools. Abington, that was a, an analysis of all the grade, the grade structures, the entire buildings, the early ed all the way to the high school. Ultimately, the many grade configurations and options you can see here culminated in a middle high school project with an early ed component within that same building. The Norwood Public Schools, also the evaluation of their entire district, all their, their entire elementary school projects or buildings were overcrowded. Ultimately, Norwood decided to build a new middle school, instead of 6'8", they decided to build a 5'8" school, bringing all the fifth grade up to the middle school, alleviating all the overcrowding in the elementary school level. That also incorporated at the high school, when we originally did that, the early ed component. Watertown Public Schools, that started out with an entire master plan. A few years ago, we did that, then did an additional study when the elementary school projects were identified as a major keystone to their process and completing their, their entire master plan of updating all their projects, all of their schools, including two new elementary schools that you see here, Zero Net Energy, Hosmer includes the early education component, the historic renovation addition to the Lowell Elementary School, and then the Watertown High School, which will be the, only the fourth lead platinum zero net energy high school in the country, and that is underway now. So, elementary schools, we've been involved in designing over 20 schools in the last 20, 20 years, all beginning with a feasibility study. Now, what is our, what is our role? Our role, we wear many hats. First is facilitator, navigating the options, navigating the various solutions that we as, as a group develop throughout the entire process. Listeners, understanding your priorities, understanding the community's goals, and implementing those into, designer as designing strategic solutions, cost-effective, educationally appropriate solutions to the different project options. Communicator, communicating clearly, communicating effectively, and also visually as well, using the tools to allow somebody to visually see what the options are. It's an incredible tool, both virtual reality and visually with animation and graphics as well, and ultimately an advisor and collaborator with you. 20-plus years of experience designing schools, we can bring all of that experience into the conversation, and what's happening across the district, or what's happening across the Commonwealth, and also New England and the United States. So, the feasibility study needs to be clear, concise, and obviously thorough. Now, there's a, there's a component to that, that we need to consider with the project in that with the MSBA modules, and the first feasibility study modules, we need to consider and balance what we can use for existing information. The project, you know, Freeman Kennedy, built 10 years ago, is a relatively new project. And so, there's going to be a lot of good, existing information that we can use, and it's valuable for the team. Balancing that with what the study of, you know, identifying the objectives and goals for the study, what does that look like? What are the tasks that need to occur with this particular study? And what can wait? What can we backfeed later as part of the process to make sure that this is a streamlined process, and also cost-effective? If you don't need it, why pay for it? Why do it now if it's unnecessary? So, bring all that together to make sure that we align with the MSBA's guidelines and MSBA process. So, one of the things that we do know very much is you've done a lot of planning ahead of time. You have been planning for this for five or six years, maybe, maybe longer, and have been talking about the objectives, talking about the concerns of overcrowding for quite some time. And we know the timeline is critical, so a clear work plan and strategic timeline is important. So, we've developed a four-step process for this project that we're going to share, share with you, that will get us to the end goal, which is, from our perspective, is getting to town meeting vote in, in May for proceeding with the project. So, the first step is taking all the information that you have collected thus far, and analyzing that, whether it's the NESCAK, NESCAK report, whether it's the, you know, we've, we've seen a lot of videos online of the Select Board meetings, or the Our Town discussions. And so, we know that you have done a lot of upfront work, so understanding what that is, and the backstory behind that, along with the, the existing conditions information on the, on the existing school. Collecting all that information, working with you to identify the priorities and goals for the project, then going and conducting with all the entire team, conducting an analysis, onsite analysis. Chris and Ashley will, will talk about the, some of the things in the site in just a few minutes. Also, Wayne's going to talk about the MEP systems, and integrating those, existing and new, and what we need to look out for. The other piece that we'll talk about in just a moment are educ, is an educational analysis and space summary analysis. So, with that, I'm going to transition.
Yeah, sorry Troy, thanks. Yeah, so when we think about a project of this kind of scope, and we consider what MEP systems we'd be looking at, we have to kind of understand how this addition is going to be, you know, working in conjunction with the existing school. How do we implement the systems that we propose, and how they tie into the existing school? How they interact with each other? And we also have to keep in mind that we're doing this under a more stringent stretch code, but the, the good thing is, this doesn't preclude us from considering systems such as variable refrigerant flow systems, demand control ventilation strategies, as well as even photovoltaic arrays.
And similar to the building, it's really critical, looking at an addition, to understand the site constraints, so be those man-made or environmental. So, we know currently your sites, your school's really centrally located in the site with these great fields to the east, but you do have some pinch points that are present on the upper and bottom portions of the site, which really do need to be factored in, very close to property lines and existing circulation. And then to the west, you have this great forested area, which provides amazing environmental opportunities, but at the same time, making sure we do the due diligence to understand, you know, any challenges or constraints that exist there. Certainly, right now from the site, it doesn't appear to be any wetlands, but that was something that we'd further explore as we move into feasibility. And then circulation, also hugely important. We understand you have multiple access points into the site. We also understand that you currently have traffic issues and delays coming from some of those highlighted intersections, and as you move into Freeman Kennedy. So, part of that feasibility will be to truly understand the traffic, do the analyses to understand the data, and, you know, as we look at potentially creating new drop-off areas or parking, to better understand what that looks like, so that we can create the best decisions possible. And then finally, almost as important to that, is creating a really beautiful and engaging entry progression too, so that's understanding your current site, you know, buffering up some of the things like loading, and making a really beautiful and safe-feeling entry progression to some of the youngest users.
And then zooming into the site, where the two classroom wings are, looking at the existing utilities, and what may need to be relocated, electrical conduit to light poles, underground detention systems and drainage, and stormwater management, what, what the capacity might look like, and studying that as the change in increased capacity and increased impervious surface occurs, looking at the water line going all the way around the back of the school, and what needs to be relocated as we make a possible building connection there and safe circulation. And obviously, the pinch point again, in that upper northwest corner.
So, this is going to be a tight site, and construction is going to be, it's occupied, occupied phase construction. And so, we have, over the last 23 years, been involved in many, many occupied phase construction projects, and over 5.5 million square feet of, of it. This is an example of Kennedy Middle School, just north of us, obviously, where this was a campus, the existing middle school, the existing elementary school, one of the existing elementary schools, and then the new school, right, right there in front, where the, the phase construction included a few areas that the new building was built about 12 and a half feet from the existing building. And so, the logistics and the, the timing, all in different schedules, that was a really critical component to the success of this project, was the phase occupied construction. Now, to the second piece of the evaluation, the second step, is looking at educational design patterns. What is, what does that mean? As when we go through the process for a new project, we'll talk about the visioning, we'll talk about the, what does the future look in education? And so, these design patterns, we'll take in an existing scenario, look at the existing building, and balance that, balance these patterns on what's happening within the existing building. And there's a, there's an opportunity with the addition to bring any aspect of these educational components up to 21st century or beyond learning examples. So, we see this as a great opportunity by taking this evaluation and going through some of these components, whether it's outdoor learning, indoor/outdoor connections, or spaces for educators, mindful spaces. I'll just go through a couple of these, just to, to give you a snapshot of some of the things that we would look at. The indoor environmental quality, looking at some of these spaces, collaboration, creativity, problem-solving spaces for, for the, for the students, but also spaces for collaboration for the faculty staff, the teachers. Looking at hands-on learning, project-based learning, what does that look like? Integrated technology in the entire building, what does the current system provide for opportunity? How can that be improved? Classrooms, flexible classrooms that integrate the technology, but also the, with the new addition, what do the building systems look like? And Wayne touched on that just a few minutes ago, in evaluating what, what the possibilities are there. And then flexible breakout spaces, whether that's testing, or just breakout spaces for general education between classrooms, what does that, what does that look like in, for possibilities to make sure there is a range of learning environments for, to support all needs? So then the third step is taking all this information and distilling it down into bite-sized, digestible pieces, and then developing solutions. What does that look like through the process? This is the most comprehensive part of the actual process, is developing various solutions, taking the site analysis, the building, educational analysis, and then developing options, and then ultimately coming up with estimates for the, the options for, for consideration. We have a history of 23 years of cost-conscious design, and the success is partially because we, we, we start the design cost-conscious approach at the very beginning, not during construction, but before design actually happens. And so, that carries through construction, and we've developed a professional mentoring program, where all of our architects, on a, on a weekly basis, get together and talk about lessons learned, talk about strategies for saving construction costs. This could not be any more important now than any other time in, in history because of the, the volatility in the construction market and construction costs. So, really thinking creatively about cost control is, is extremely important. Also aided by, we talked about visualization and building management system. We have a cloud-based system, so all of us, and our engineers, architects, we can work on the same model at the same time, and have real-time interactions that reduce conflicts during design, and also reduce change orders during construction. And then, as I mentioned, intelligent design, cost-conscious design, thinking about how to strategize the design process to make decisions that are going to reduce costs. This is Hosmer Elementary School in Watertown, and thinking about the structural system, the layout, the efficiencies, as well as the exterior building envelope, the materials, the makeup of the exterior, and with the stretch code changing, that becomes more important as well, and making sure it's as efficient as possible. And in this particular case, we were able to save six months in construction schedule, as well as 12 and a half percent in construction costs. So, it starts at the beginning. Construction cost-conscious design starts at the beginning.
So, we have, we have quite a history of designing systems that are cost-effective, and stay within, within budgetary constraints, and stay within cost. However, that's, that's, that will never come at the expense of the health and safety of, of students and staff. You know, while, while construction costs continue to escalate, we will always continue to implement systems that will maintain a safe environment by applying, you know, energy recovery units to minimize recirculated air, you know, ultraviolet bipolarization air filtration techniques, we increase outdoor air volumes, and we increase the level of filtration, all, all at that, all to maintain a health environment without going crazy with costs.
So, the last component, step four, is then taking that information and continuing your efforts thus far in informing the community, informing the constituents to get to town meeting in, in May. And part of that, just as, just as I mentioned, we, we have, we've been involved in so many projects, we've been able to communicate with a lot of different aspects of social media, TV spots, radio, like, it's, it's something that is, we've, we've been involved in quite a bit in the last 20 years. And so, pulling that all together, you can see the four steps. In the first few weeks, we'll talk about setting up for success, the existing conditions, evaluation. The next few weeks will be technical and educational evaluation, information gathering. And then the center, the bulk of the time will be spent interpreting that information, and coming up and coordinating and collaborating with you, developing solutions, and what is the best solution for the district, for the school, and then ultimately, report the findings. And you can see, the last four weeks of reporting the findings, however, we do think that throughout the entire process, with the school committee, a select board, with community forums, it's important to bring everybody along with the process to get to that end game, so everybody's informed, and it's not a surprise, and it's, and it's a success at town meeting. And with that, thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you. So, we have a series of questions, some you may have touched on in your presentation, so we might tweak them a little bit, but Vicki is going to start us off with the first question, and again, if you've addressed it in the presentation, you can just see if there's anything new you want to add, or, or we'll go from there.
Awesome.
So, thank you for the presentation. So, you did actually talk about your feasibility studies, but I was, we were kind of wondering if you can expand a little bit, maybe talk about any specific challenges that you might have faced, and how you address them, and, and also if you can do, tell us a little bit how you siege the work to limit disruption to school programs if the site was occupied to conduct a feasibility study?
Yeah, so we, so the first, well, let me, let me, I'll answer the second question, or the second part. The second part is, we will work with, with you and the schedule of the schools to disrupt as minimal as possible the, the feasibility study itself. And, and really, because there's such good information on the existing Freeman Kennedy School, there will be, we'll want to walk through the building and see where your challenges are from a spatial standpoint, and that can be done after school, it can be done at any point in time that, that doesn't have any disruption on the, the school operation. And as far as the site, the, the site also can, can be done at a later time in the day, or a day that's, you know, maybe there's professional development, or there's something going on that we're not disrupting the process. So, as, as far as the feasibility study, we're, we're, hopefully we'll be invisible in this, in a sense, related to that. With the construction, that is a, as you saw with the Kennedy Middle School, that's a different animal, right? So, we'll be working with an OPM at that point, and also a contractor, and the key in our mind is the communication, and making sure that not only communication that helps us develop phasing drawings and phasing documents for the contractor, but during construction, there's clear communication, both on the operations side and on the construction side. And that goes, that goes for anything related to construction, and also related to, frankly, our development of the feasibility study, so we get it right, we get the solution accurate. And so, communication is key. The first question, as far as the, the challenge is, I think every, every project, every project that I have worked on, I think anybody's worked on, it always comes up with, always has a challenge, a hurdle to, to overcome, right? And I think, from my perspective, the way to approach it is through understanding and communication. And so, we don't think that any challenge is insurmountable, as long as we understand the goal, as long as we understand the, and communicate what the, you know, what, what, whatever it may be, whether it's, whether it's a committee, or whether it's an individual, or whether it's a challenge in the existing building, whatever it may be, it's all about clear communication, and understanding the, the ultimate goal.
Thank you.
Didn't you give you a specific example, but...
Oh, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I have an next one, thanks. Actually, a couple part questions. Can you clarify the project team from AI3? I know it's you and Justin, but for instance, the project architect, or any other critical team members from AI3?
Sure. We have, follow-up after that. You bet. So, as I mentioned, I will be the point person, and in, in charge of the project as the partner in charge. And Justin will be also part of that process, he will be the second, second person in line, if you will. And then, for the feasibility study, the first component of that, we will have, and he's, he's a principal and a project architect, so he will be the project architect.
Uh, Justin, oh, okay.
Correct, yep. Yep. And then we will have a support team that is just coming off of a project in the next six weeks, that aligns perfectly with the meet, the development of the, the timeline for the third step. And so, that's, we'll have a few individuals related to that support team as well. We also have, that will be part of the, a part of the team, we also have John Jordan, who is our security and technology designer and expert, and so, he will be part of the process from the very beginning. And he's, he's been designing schools, technology, and the security systems for, since inception, about, about a year after we started, so he's been there, been with us for 22 years. And then we'd have, you know, the, the engineering team, as well as part of that, part of the feasibility process. And because we have such a, a team that has been working together for 15, 20 years, Wayne... And because we have such a team that has been working together for 15, 20 years, Wayne were just joking about it, we've been, Wayne and I have been working together for 25 years. And so we are able to, you know, able to bring anybody into the picture from a consultant standpoint as well, if necessary.
Good. Thank you for clarifying that. So follow-up to that. So if you think about, say, your last feasibility study, not full project, but feasibility study, how stable was your team on the project? And how would you foresee stability going forward, say, for our project? Team stability?
Team stability? Well, I would say solid, I mean, you can, I would say completely solid as far as, you know, the same team continuing through, or what's the, what do you, what do you mean?
For instance, how often are people on the team turning over? Like you loop somebody to another project, or maybe they leave the firm, or whatever it is, and you have to replace them, and this constant change?
Sure.
So how do you deal with that, if you've dealt with that?
Well, I can say two things. One is, we have very low turnover. As a firm in 23 years, most of our, most of our team has been with us, on average, 10 to 15 years. And so there are, there's a solid, in our minds, a really solid group of architects and support team that we have had for a very long time. And we try to make sure that project architects and people working on the studies and also the projects go from start to finish. And some will start at different stages based on the development of the, in need for the project, but that is, that is what we strive for, to make sure that there's consistency in the team, consistency in who is working on the feasibility study or the project in general.
Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, I'm next. So again, just for scope's sake, just with respect to feasibility, what experience do you have working with the MSBA on school feasibility, feasibility, or, and then subsequent, I think, construction projects that would have kind of come after feasibility?
Yeah.
I know you said 20 years, so I'm assuming, yeah. So if you want to give us a highlight reel, that might keep you in the five-minute response time.
So I will just say, it is extensive. Every single project that, that we have worked on with the MSBA starts with a feasibility study, and starts with that first, it's actually the second module. First is the eligibility period, second module is the selection of the team, and then the third module, third and fourth, is feasibility and schematic design. So those, those components, on every single project, we have gone through a feasibility evaluation, existing conditions as well. Aside from that, there are many projects that we have been involved in, Watertown as an example, that we've conducted a complete master plan outside of the MSBA. The two elementary schools, Zero Net Energy Schools, were outside of the MSBA project. The high school is with the MSBA, so they're moving simultaneously. That started with a master plan of their entire community, the district, and their facilities. So we have, we have had many, many years of experience with that in private schools as well, starting with, they usually call us for a master plan, and then it turns into projects to help with their overall long-term goals.
Okay, so just like a follow-up, so I can, I can have a number that's attached to my response. So you said, I think that you, like, in the past 10 years?
Yeah.
For MSBA, how many feasibility studies have you been involved in? In the past five years is fine, too, if that's an easier recollection point.
So the past 10 years, I would say over 30. I would say over, over 30 feasibility studies. Yeah.
And then just one more from earlier, you said that you guys had been asked to serve as experts by MSBA?
Yeah, yep. Yep, so the, the MSBA has a program, it's an educational program, they, over the last few years, they have developed educational series which are really good, and if you have time to, I think they're recorded, they're really interesting. This one was Demystifying Net Zero. And so a few of our architects were experts, panelists on that presentation as far as promoting and talking about ironically non-MSBA project, the two elementary schools, the Zero Net Energy projects, they were like, yes, this is fantastic, even though they're not ours, this is fantastic. And so, and Wayne was, Wayne was part of that, that group and an expert from a mechanical side.
It's a fun process, it's really, it's kind of neat. It's very well done by the MSBA, I got to give them a lot of credit, they're very thoughtful, they give you a very nice framework to work within. So, I mean, your slide said 90-plus schools, so I was saying, those 90-plus schools, you have at least 60 total, that would be MSBA schools, right?
Yeah, probably. But in the last 10 years, it'd probably be 30.
I was trying to be helpful, I think I...
I know, because I've been stuck with him for 25 years. I never picked up his fashion sense.
We do give him a hard time all the time.
I actually watched that program on EBS. As soon as I saw you, like, he looks familiar, and then as soon as you brought it up, like, that's where I knew you from. Okay. Okay, I have a couple of questions. Can you describe your approach to project management?
My approach to project management? That is a great question. I, can you, well, from a sense of, I take a pragmatic approach first, because the ultimate goal is getting, and that's probably, that's why we've got a, you know, a method to get you to point B, which is town meeting, is looking at it from initially the project as a whole, from a timeline, and strategically, how do we get to that point? The creative part, and I don't know if this is...
Might be part of the follow-up.
This is your follow-up, all right. So, and because, because we need, we need to make decisions and get to a point where we achieve your goals and achieve the priorities for the end of the project. And so that's one aspect, so from a pragmatic standpoint, that's the approach. From a creative standpoint and a cost-control standpoint, that also starts at the same time, but interweaves into that approach, into that process. And then just from a management or a leadership standpoint, it's important for me that everybody has their input. It's important to make sure that whatever is developed, or whatever an idea that is put forth, that everybody hears it and it sparks other thoughts from other people to get to an ultimate goal. And I think that's the essence of creativity in coming up with, whether it's a creative, cost-effective solution, or whether it's the use of materials, or whether it's, you know, how do we develop the site in a way that uses the efficiency of space the best and achieves the, the early education space, play space, activity space necessary, or the drop-off, or the pickup, or, like, all those things, the creative aspect, everybody at the table should have input. And then that's, that's, the creative piece to me is that component, to get to the best solution possible.
You kind of answered my second question already with your first. So how do you communicate with your subcontractors and ensure their contributions to the final report are comprehensive, address the concerns of the district, and are delivered on time?
I give them a hard time.
I get yelled at a lot.
I give them a hard time, and I make sure they're countables. That's, that's the, and you know what's awesome is, we joke around, because we have worked for so long together, but you really don't have to make, when we've been working so long together, you don't have to make those calls for accountability. It's all, it's always trying to push the envelope and, and make sure that, you know, the client is getting the best product possible. But that's, if you've got a clear path, and you've got a clear timeline, and everything is laid out, there shouldn't be any, any guessing. And so we don't have to make those calls very often for accountability.
You always establish, Troy and his whole team, they always establish, the goal always comes first, what the, it's almost like the mission statement is written first. That's your mission statement, and this, we have to get to this goal by this time, and they spell out a timeline, and it's crystal clear, like, there is no ambiguity. When the deliverable is said to be, you know, May 3rd, this is a deliverable, you don't call Troy and say, can we make it May 4th or May 5th? It's like, no, it's May 3rd. But, but it takes a lot of pressure off of us, because in construction and design, things move so fast and so fluid, that if somebody just says, as soon as possible, as soon as possible never gets here. But, I mean, Troy and Justin and the other guys in his office, Jim Jordan, they're all very, they're very crystal clear of what they expect, and they're very crystal clear of what the schedule is, and they're very crystal clear on what the deliverables are. And at the end of the day, just, and I get teased a lot, but it makes my job easier, you know, so...
Thank you.
You guys sort of outlined what you use currently to get the word out to the community and inform them about what's going on. Could you sort of describe in more depth about how you engage the community and how you provide information and updates to the public?
Sure, yeah. So we think that it's early and often, that making sure that, and I'll go back to this particular slide, we've identified three different community forums as strategic spots along the timeline to inform the community of updates in the process. And so, you know, that, as we, as we move into, into the process, that may shift and that may adjust naturally, but it's making sure that, that we have that approach to methodically make sure along the timeline, the community, or the school committee, or the school, the select board is, is updated in the process. How do we do that? That's something that, like I said earlier, that we've been involved with creating videos, like 60-second videos to upload to Instagram or Facebook. We've been on WSAR radio, we have had TV spots, you know, it, really what does the process require, and what's the best way to communicate? It might be different for each district, and you guys know the community better than we do right now, and so it will be, you know, a discussion and a, you know, a process of identifying what is the best, what is the best approach, and then moving forward from there. Like I said, we've uploaded photographs, videos, created, whether it's existing conditions videos, or animations based on the proposed solution, things like that, that are really powerful and really helpful in the process. And then hopefully it's all in person with, you know, community forums and things like that, those are always exciting.
Great. So I have a last question. Is there anything that we haven't asked you about tonight that you feel makes your firm stand out, that you wanted to share with us, and that would help us evaluate your candidacy?
Oh, wow, that's...
It's open-ended.
Wow. That is a big question. What's that? What was that?
It's your last best.
Wow, I think, I think the biggest, well, one of the things that we take pride on is the fact that is probably no, it's no secret to us, but it may be to others, that 25-plus years ago, when we got into school designer education, maybe back then, I didn't know, and my partners and the team didn't know, okay, that was what we're going to do. But from that point in designing schools, having the ability to really transform space in education and affect so many individuals, students ranging from, you know, toddlers through 12th graders, that is, that is pretty powerful. And we have had the opportunity to design so many cool spaces, whether those are in schools, whether that's restaurants, or hair salons, or infant rooms, to clock towers, to, I mean, the list goes on and on, observatories. But having the ability to change and transform a person's experience is really powerful, and as educators and others, that, that's a similar, probably a similar experience. The other thing that I would say is that if you contacted any one of our, our references, anybody, I think you would get a resounding excitement to work with our team. And I say that, and it sounds weird for me to say that, but, meaning that, you know, it might come off as a little bit confident, but it's true. Like, we have from contractors to mayors, to superintendents, to facilities directors, if you contacted anyone that we've worked with, it wouldn't be, yeah, we, they were good, they were good guys. It would be a resounding yes, you should, and we would, we would really happy if you, if you did reach out to our references, but anyway, I don't know, if there's anything else that you guys...
I mean, I think, work with you guys, I mean, it's, the schools you design are, you know, when you look at a community, you come to, you know, a town like Norfolk, or, you know, Whitman-Hanson, or Natick, and, I mean, schools are kind of like the, become the centerpiece of your community now, you know, they're not just, it's not just a brick building that, that were built in the fittest you could. I mean, they're kind of like, they're like the highlight of the community, they're community centers, there's community common spaces in there, you have everything from senior citizens lunches in the cafeteria, to continuing education classes, if you're in a comprehensive high school, learning auto tech, and it's just kind of cool to know you're involved in a, in a, in a building that has such a, it's a positive influence on the community, too. It's not, you know, not to take away from any other type of construction, but it's, schools are generally always positive, and that's, and it's, I drive my wife crazy because we drive around all over New England, if we go through a town like, oh, I did that school, oh, I did that school, you know? So anyway, that's, that's all I can add, sorry.
I would reflect what Wayne is saying as well. Having worked with Troy and his team for so many years, we're, we're allowed for you to see us and our work, and working with this team, and the ability to be creative, even on a small project, to be creative and give you the best, kind of, I don't know, Ashley, you know?
Right, and it's just the goal, it's all about the students, it's all about the community, and like, just creating these spaces that they can learn and grow and really experience everything and open their eyes. So I think that's what gets us really, really excited and really drives our work.
Can't get that in a designing Dunkin' Donuts and Walmarts and...
They designed? I said, they designed that?
Yeah, right, right. Well, it's pretty much a stamp, right?
All right, we have time, about 10 minutes left. If you have any questions for us that we can answer, anything in the project that wasn't clear, or anything you wanted to talk further about?
I don't think, I don't have any, the only question is, when do we get started?
That is a fair question, timeline-wise, we are interviewing again tomorrow night, another firm. We have deliberations after that, and then we'll be recommending to the school committee on November 9th, a firm to award the bid.
Okay.
All right, so that's our timeline in terms of decision-making.
Great. Thank you guys very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm sorry, you sent us the slides.
You bet. Yeah, no problem.
Thank you so much for coming.
No problem.
Sorry about the location change.
No worries at all.
It's a busy night in Norfolk. I've got the catwalk. She'll use it. I know everyone's anxious to get out of here, but I think we actually technically need a motion to adjourn, or I can just adjourn it? I'm not sure with the sub...
I moved to adjourn.
Nobody can second it because you're the subcommittee, we're guests of yours. So, you can, you can second and adjourn it.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. It is adjourned. Now you make...